Meet us and so they're working on it right now and he would just.
Sure.
They're standing out in the lobby.
We will reconvene at 10:05. Is that good? Seven minutes or?
Whatever you, you know, you all feel.
Yep, that would be great. Okay.
Okay.
We'll take a seven-minute break. We'll be back at 10:05. Come on back. Okay, now we are in the regular agenda. So now would be the time if you would like to speak on any one of these items. The award of the agreement to Newburgh Construction, the Harbor Walk Gilchrist Park Playground Restroom, the FY 2018 Department Performance Measures, seawall repair by homeowners, reconsideration of Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Dispensing Facilities, the city manager, the CRA vacancy, and the city clerk evaluation. If you would like to speak on any one of those, now would be the time. Please make your way to this podium. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Krikorian. I live on Francesca Court. My husband and I are one of the homeowners who have requested that we go ahead and do the seawall repair on our own. I just have several questions. I don't know if you can answer right away. But since we are, we have given a deposit for contract to do so, I'd like to know what the city would have provided if there had not been a storm, if you were coming to repair or replace our seawall. That's number one. Number two, I'd like to know, based on the emails, we've been, we've been fortunate enough to get the weekly emails from Nancy and from Lynn Matthews. So we read, even though we were in New Jersey during the storm, we read about the updates and everything that was going on. The initial email said that you were going to be only providing the seawall itself, nothing landward or waterward. I understand the dock issue and that that's our responsibility. But I would presume and I would hope that if we do do this repair on our own, the city would at the very least reimburse us for the panels, for the cap, which is a very expensive portion of the repair or replace, and the fill. I would, I know I've seen other seawalls done by the city in past years and in those years, the city did everything, including the sod as far as I knew. So I'm just curious as to what you would provide under normal circumstances, what you will provide now, and if there is a timeline or some kind of priority that's being set for who's going to be done first, or at least a guideline of an area that's going to be done first. We would really like to know that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on regular agenda items? Now would be the time.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Richard Rosick. I live on Parisian Court. And, you know, I have made it clear via emails to Kathy Miller, the supervisor of canal maintenance, that, you know, I am really not willing to wait or not, you know, I don't find it necessary to wait for the city to respond. I'd like to go ahead with an independent contractor. I'm willing to hold the city harmless. I expect no reimbursement. I would just like to get a permit to get my property usable and put things back in shape. Yeah, very, very simple. So I really would request a, the permission to issue a permit and get Contract Marine Group going as soon as possible. Marine Contracting Group, please forgive me. So really, in summary, I'd just like to see a permit issued as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on regular agenda items?
Hi. Kathy Getz, Historic District. I want to thank city staff. The playground restroom issue came up. You guys, Howard, thank you. You acted. You got on it. The velocity zone removal is just a great thing. Thank you for proceeding without waiting for the 180-day comment period. This is the premier park in this city, used by so many people and of course I live 100 feet away from it. So I really appreciate, I appreciate and my neighbors appreciate what you have done to get these restrooms done. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the regular agenda? Make your way to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the first item of business under budget and I would just like to disclose that my husband was a bidder on this project, so I will be removing myself and I will be filling out the proper paperwork for not voting on this matter and Gary will conduct the order of business and I will be back.
The item is in a, an agreement to Newburgh. They were the lowest responsive bidder for the fabrication of the panels. This is the labor rate and we've, we've worked with Newburgh for fair many, many, many years. So we're recommending approval so we can get on with getting the seawall panels built. Any comments or questions?
I had one question. I had a request from a citizen that while they don't have a problem with the potential award for the bid, they want to know why it's so much less expensive than all the other ones. And it is substantially so.
Good morning. Mary Ann Pace, Procurement Manager, for the record. We had that same concern and we did follow up with Tyler Newburgh, President of Newburgh Construction Services, and asked them why they were much, so much less than the other bidders. And he replied that once he saw the tabulation posted, him and his staff, they ran the numbers again. They said that number is good and they're not wanting to, you know, get, um, get too much profit. They wanted to be fair and that is what they need to do the work and they agree that that is their price. It is a good price.
Okay, and, and we have used them before as my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes, they've had our flat concrete work contract for several years now.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to verify that because it,
I understand, yes.
You know, sometimes cheaper is not always better.
Right.
Just want, okay, thank you.
And we did follow up with reference surveys on their work and they were all backed very favorable.
And as, as I recall, this was, a lot of it had to do with the actual hourly labor charge that their.
Actually, it's per panel.
Okay.
So they gave, they actually gave us their cost analysis for all their costs in, in the panels and with their profit. They were only asking for a 10% profit. So it's a cost per slab and not an hourly rate.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I was just glad to see that procurement did follow up and, and asked the question that I think came to all of our minds is why is this so different? So, thank you. I guess I'll move approval.
Okay.
Second.
You have a second?
Okay.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously. Okay.
And now you can resume your position as Vice Mayor.
Come on, boss. Thank you.
I'm back and I will put this in the folder for Karen for later. Okay, next we have the Harbor Walk Gilchrist Park Playground Restrooms.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Back in February of this year, City Council did authorize whileer engineering to pursue a letter of map revision for the portion of Gilchrist Park where the Gilchrist Park Playground Restrooms are intended to be located. The LOMAR was sought in order to reduce the ultimate construction costs of this restroom facility by reducing the flood zone designation from a velocity zone, a VE zone, to an AE zone. As you see on the screen, this is the, the revised document from FEMA which shows that the elevation will be changed to AE 11. This letter of map, map revision will become effective on February 14th of 2018. What staff is requesting here is permission to proceed with engineering costs to redesign the previously designed restroom facility. Basically, we'll be looking at building calculations and planned modifications to account for the change in the flood zone designation. And those funds are $8,000 from the engineer.
After we redesign it, we then want to bid it.
Correct.
And get it done.
And so then I'm understanding at that point in time, we will know what the difference, real difference would be.
Mm-hmm, as far as the monetary. I know that we are gonna seek another LOMAR for the other area possibly.
Yes, we are.
Is it gonna take a whole year? I think that's where the rub kind of came, that we didn't realize that it was gonna take a whole year for this, you know, we thought we'd get the LOMAR and then boom, we could, but we really can't even start construction on this till it's final?
Correct. The construction can't proceed. We can't get a building permit under this letter of map revision until it becomes effective on February 14th of next year. The, the engineer of record has stated that the, the second portion of the park, the Area B, as was discussed in the February 17 council meeting, that that area can proceed at this point, that this is an appropriate time to start, but he really needs the ASBIL survey from the completion of Area 1. So we're still waiting on that ASBIL survey so that he can actually do the, the work of applying for the, letter of map revision for the second area of the park.
So is that already in process or is that gonna have to be another agenda item to decide on that?
Based on council's direction from February, the February meeting, staff has proceeded with, with pushing that forward. So it does not need to come back for City Council approval.
Okay, so when we do get the ASBIL, can we get a timeline update of when we may get that LOMAR and we could start construction on the second set of restrooms, just so everybody's on the same page?
Certainly.
As far as timelines go?
Certainly, we can get that update.
Questions for Mitchell? So we need a motion to approve the appropriation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve the appropriation for the restrooms. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously. So this is just the appropriation to redesign and then we'll be looking at the design. Yep. Bidding? Bidding? Okay.
I just know how long it takes to bid these things.
Yes.
By the time we design it, then we bid it. It'll be February and we'll have approval to.
Good.
Good.
We can get started right away.
Okay, next we're going into unfinished business and we have the fiscal year 2018 Department Performance Measures.
We have revised them, put timelines in there where, where we think we can get some objectives accomplished prior to September 30th. If there are no dates, it means those objectives will be evaluated based on work completed by September 30th.
Anybody have issues?
I just have a question.
Sure.
On the top of page three, question, it is a comment under urban design, so it may be something that, that Joan can, can answer. Is the, the new highway commercial area, is that included in the wording here? Because I didn't see that specifically mentioned, but I was looking for that and I assumed maybe that was, but I.
For the record, Joan Laboe, Urban Design Manager. No, not yet. We are completing the new highway commercial.
But I mean, is that included in the objectives?
Yes.
Well, yeah, urban design is gonna be working on.
Yes.
That's why I was wondering. I understand you're working on it. Is it worded here in the objectives?
Oh, commercial, yes. Commercial general, sorry. You said highway commercial.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That answers your question?
Mm-hmm.
Any changes or?
Okay.
No, I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to approve the department performance measures. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously.
And I want to thank Howard and staff for adding some dates and things. Agreed.
Yep. Okay, next we have seawall repair by homeowners issue.
Good morning. Mark Garing, Public Works. As you've heard from a couple residents this morning, we've been asked by what was a few but is growing now. I think we got three last week. So a handful of residents have requested permission to build their own seawalls. Some have asked about reimbursement and others have said they wanted to bear that cost entirely. At first, those folks that were requesting this were those that we considered severe and will be on the first phase of repairs. But we are also hearing from folks who are in the middle tier who probably won't see a seawall for eight to 10 months, a year and a half, somewhere in that phase. They're also looking to pay for their own seawall repairs. So we've, we, initial concerns were that we want the seawall, if this is allowed, that the seawall be the same seawall that we have throughout the city because we'll continue to maintain this. The seawall would remain in the district. The, the homeowners would continue to pay into the Canal Maintenance Fund. And our initial thoughts were rather than have them construct a seawall panel that we would have to inspect and to be certain that they have put the proper steel in it and we use a high-quality steel rather than the inexpensive rebar, we thought that giving the homeowners the panels that we already have produced would probably be the best solution for us and for them and the, going forward for the seawall itself. The work for the cap and the rest of that, we would send inspectors out and they could inspect that. It wouldn't require that it be our seawall contractor or any of our materials. It's all common materials that we could just oversee that they constructed it properly. We, we do envision if something like this were allowed, that there'd have to be an agreement set forth so that it, there's no claims afterwards, hold harmless on both sides and, and all that sort of stuff that we would get with the city attorney on. And then last week, we had our first meeting with FEMA and we brought this subject up with FEMA and we did not get a, a very clear answer with them. They want to make sure that we distinguish that this is city property and not homeowner's property. And we, we think we could be a year, two years before we actually get final determination from FEMA that it's absolutely okay to, to allow the homeowners. But the, the original conversation, the initial conversation from the, the field-level FEMA personnel was that it certainly couldn't be reimbursed to the city, any costs that we, costs that we bore or that residents bore through this private repair of the seawall. And we're here to discuss it and take your direction. I could add that I did speak to the Board of Realtors yesterday and they had a couple of concerns. One was that there's many people who are selling their homes and this, their home sale is contingent on whether or not this, the seawall is repaired. They asked that could they be moved up in priority if their home was for sale? And the other request was that the city provides some sort of relief or assurance that will help them close on their loans for these homes. And I don't, I don't understand that process. I don't know if it's just a letter or some financial commitment, but something that they ask that we explore.
Can you also touch on the question that came up about if we didn't have a storm versus having a storm, what we're gonna do as far as repairing the seawalls that are storm damaged? What is the difference?
Very little difference in our initial intention. The, the differences are that in our normal seawall contracts, the contractor that we've had has always gone above and beyond what's required by the contract in taking care of the person's property a little better than what is absolutely required by our, our codes and ordinances. For instance, a sprinkler head might be there and rather than cap it off like he's required to do, he may go purchase a new sprinkler head and put it in for them. He may position their gate or some private property they had near the seawall work. He may take that and put it back in place a little bit. So he would, he would go above and beyond what we required by the contract. We're not promising that in this new contract. We're, we don't know the bidders. We don't know what they're going to do. And to, to give a pay item for something like that gets way too complex. It certainly isn't reimbursed by FEMA. So we're gonna stick, stick strictly to the city code, which requires that the homeowners take care of all of their personal property, docks, lifts, water, electricity to the dock, fences, sidewalks, anything like that in the vicinity of the seawall will be the responsibility of the homeowner. We will take care of the seawall, the cap, the fill and the sod.
So normally, under normal circumstances, don't we have like a six-foot zone? But obviously, some people have, have lost more than six feet, so we will take care of the fill.
We'll take care of all of the erosion related to the seawall failure. And one other point that we're, we're still waiting for determination on is that for many years now, we have replaced seawalls from property line to property line. Going back 10 years or further, we were replacing seawall only where, where it failed and then we changed our direction and we went property line to property line. So we requested that of FEMA and they have requested that we put together a documentation to show that we replace seawall from property line to property line so that we can continue that process.
Questions, Jaha?
Yes, I, I was at a tenant's in the last, um, the, the meeting of the Canal District and, and there was consensus among some members that, that, that the district be able to allow Public Works to be able to do whatever necessary erosion control. I was wondering if it's possible that we view this as two different things, erosion control and seawall. And I say this because I, I've seen so many catastrophic cases that I almost feel that our real focus should be erosion control and seawall secondary. I say this for two reasons. One, to save people's property, but two, there is a very big chance that we'll have big FEMA issues because of the fact that we're already dealing with trying to hold them to a precedent in the past. And we pretty much can be fairly certain that if we deviate from the district taking care of the seawalls, that pretty much we're looking at possibly, again, a third of our whole seawall infrastructure not being able to be reimbursed. And, and I just think that it's in the homeowner's interest as well as the city's interest that if we make erosion control its own issue of itself, that that would probably serve everyone better. That's just my opinion.
How would, what would that entail?
Like, like example, unlike what he, Rick have mentioned before, if there need to put pieces of steel with the fill, whatever's needed to prevent the land from falling in. Because the thing is that, you remember how Pronger Isles was constructed? It was constructed, basically, it was, it was land, mangrove land and so the land is basically reclaimed land that's also held up by the seawalls. And so they don't just hold back the water, they actually hold the land up. And so I think that we have to understand that it's not simply seawall reconstruction. That we're actually looking at really pretty much holding the stability of this part of the city together. And I think that really we have to view it with that kind of seriousness, that we really should say erosion control is our first concern, then seawall secondary. That's just my opinion.
Which would probably, erosion control, I would guess, would fall outside because they said, when we met with them, it's all about the structure.
And I'm saying us.
It's all about the integrity of the structure and not the pool, not the pool foundation. It's the integrity of the home, the structure itself. So if we did go that route, that would be within, you know, the city's budget, not with, not anything that's reimbursable from FEMA.
Yeah, yeah. Because, because my, my fear is that if, I'm just hearing from residents that we could be running into a much bigger macro issue if enough people's pools and homes were to basically fall into the canal based on this. And I just think that erosion control is something that we have to view as its own thing. Because I think some of our seawall conversation, it's, feels good, but I think that this one is people's property is such, in such a danger that we have to really understand that erosion control is probably more important than putting a seawall there.
Lynn?
First, I would like to ask, is, is there something that you can provide to us in writing that is a list of what the city's responsibility is in terms of a normal seawall replacement project? In other words, you're saying that the city is responsible for the seawall and the seawall cap. The homeowner is responsible for this and this and this and this. Is there something in writing that says all of that and spells it out very clearly?
We've tried to explain that in the, the recent updates of seawall. We explain it over and over when we, we talk with folks, but we'll do that in the weekly. I guess we could do that again this, this coming week.
I'd like to see that because I, I mean, I keep getting questions too. People are saying, well, I've, I've heard that the current contract that MCG does, they go ahead and replace all of that stuff when they put the new seawall in. I want to make sure that people are, are clearly understanding of what's going on with what their responsibility will be. I mean, just because MCG does that doesn't mean that that's the way it's supposed to be handled. They're doing it out of the goodness of their heart and God bless them for doing that. But I know that all the other subcontractors may not end up working on that agenda. And secondly, I, I have a real problem with the, the potential issues that could arise from allowing homeowners to do their own seawall repairs. For, for the consistency standpoint, for the issue of possibly jeopardizing the FEMA reimbursement contract, I, I have a really intense dislike for this whole idea. I think, I understand that there are people that have much more severe circumstances than others and I sympathize. I truly do. I lost my seawall a couple of years ago and it's, and that wasn't hurricane-related, but it is devastating. And, and you go into tailspin mode. You, you don't know what to do and how to handle it. But at the same time, I think, I think for the consistency standpoint and for the whole FEMA reimbursement issue, we, we really need to be cognizant that this could be a problem if we approve it. Yeah, I had a couple of thoughts. One is we're using the word "their" or "my seawall" and these seawalls are owned by the city. So it's, when I look at this, it's, it's the seawalls that are at the property. It's not really their individ, the property owner's seawall. And I've had residents actually comment to me about this, that this would be similar to us deciding, we don't think the city's repairing our road fast enough. And so we want to have a private contractor come out here and resurface our cul-de-sac or whatever. We don't like the way that the sidewalk is. Something's happening on our sidewalk on our, on our house and we think that we're gonna replace the sidewalk or taking it upon ourselves to do something that's within the city's right of way. So I certainly feel for the resident who has a severe erosion issue and I, I think that, you know, anything we can do to, to control erosion in the interim, I think we should. And that's just something we, I think we have an obligation to try to do. But as far as the overall integrity of the program, I would hate to see us allowing homeowners starting to, to do this and all of a sudden now we have this, this mess on our hands of contractors interfering with contractors and, and city staff while city staff is, is, I think, burdened with trying to do the best job and get this program going as fast as possible. But now you're being detoured by having to pay attention to other inspections. And I just see that the potential for adding on to this, becoming a, a mess. And so I, I feel for the resident whose, whose property is, it's compromised, mine is. But, you know, it's, I'm, I'm willing to wait. Mine's not in a real severe situation. But I understand how some people would really prefer their property to be looking as, as nice as they can. And certainly, if there's a way for us to provide some assurance to homes that are going to be for sale, that, that the seawall will be restored, then I'll leave that up to our city attorney to, to sort through what that could be.
Thank you.
But, yeah, and I've, and then I've also had some residents actually concerned about the speed of the boats in the canals and ask me what is slow, when we say minimum wake. And, you know, minimum wake is if, if you back down on your speed and you settle back into the water, then you are going too fast. And so they suggested that we should make the canals a no-wake zone during this time period because it seems like some home, some voters just don't get it and they continue to speed by the homes that have compromised seawalls and have erosion issues. So that was a suggestion by some residents. It's a good one.
Gary?
I have to make some comments, obviously. Relative to what Mark was saying for residents that wanted to repair their own seawalls and are supplying the seawall material itself so that we could have control and so forth of that, I think that's all well and good. And I have full confidence that from a managerial standpoint, the city could see to it that the seawalls were done in an appropriate way. However, the quandary is, is that we're looking at jeopardizing, as my fellow councilperson pointed out, $18 million worth of reimbursement based on what we think now. And I just want to put these things in perspective. What we heard Mark saying is, is they oppose this to FEMA. It may take a year. I would hope that there would be some way maybe to, to speed FEMA up to help us come to a resolution or an agreement to do that. So what I would say is, is from my perspective, I would ask our city staff and, and Mark in particular to. to try to press FEMA on this issue so that we could accommodate the citizens we have that would like to take a proactive approach on their, on their own nickel. And we would supply material and make sure that was done properly. But until that's the case, I don't feel that we can, as I get a sense from all of us, jeopardize an extra $18 million worth of tab that the city might have to eat. Having dealt with FEMA from Charlie, I know that it can be a interesting journey. Just on a personal level, we were given some assistance through FEMA on the, with a loan, and then the loan was pulled halfway through the project because of a misunderstanding of finances. And then it was reimbursed, then it was reinstated, but you still had to jump through all those hoops. They have very strict, linear, non-negotiable fences that they deal with. And I applaud city staff and Mark and all you guys for negotiating this maze. And we need, like I said, my, we cannot jeopardize the 18-plus million dollars that we have potentially sitting on the table.
I think too, any red flag that we raise could be problematic. I see Sharon sitting there. Does she have something she wants to say? No? It's all been said, okay. Again, yes, we totally sympathize. Some of my neighbors have severe, severe, severe damage. And it is, you know, related to the structure in their house. And so when will we get an idea of where we're going to work first and publish some kind of prioritization?
Well, we have to bid the contracts.
Okay. So give me a timeline. Give me two months, six months, five months? When will we have a prior prioritization list of how we're going to proceed?
Okay, we completed our initial inspection yesterday and we intend to have a prioritization map by the end of the week. That will have everybody rated with a failure as a one, two, or three, high priority, medium priority, or low priority. Those priorities are determined. Those people who we've visited or have reported or we have photos of very distinct erosion problems will be the high priority folks. Most of the folks that have picked up sandbags, those kinds of things, those are the high priority people. And those will be in the first pass of the contract. We expect the contract to, the bid opens the 17th of November. And we think the award will happen early December. Mid-December, we'll be getting the contractors moving into the area. They will then, the contract for each area will then supply us a map of how they're going to approach their high priority projects, what order they're going to tackle them in. They're going to look at the logistics of how to move in the area, where they're going to mobilize, and do their own selection of everything within that priority and give us a tentative schedule for those high priority cases. Then they'll move on to the medium and low priorities. The low priorities are simply going to be those vacant lots that have really no effect except for the realtors who reminded me, they may be having a home planned for building on them sometime in the future. But for us right now, our intention is vacant lots that are not adjacent to any homes that have failures will be very last. The typical seawall failure where the seawall has dropped a foot, you may see a little dirt out there, but we think that most, the majority of those will remain intact until we get their seawalls replaced. They'll just, it's, you know, not safe to be out on the seawall, but we don't think they're going to collapse any further. May have a few, but not many of them. And if I could go into a moment's discussion on the erosion.
Yes.
From the very beginning, erosion was our number one concern. We have to make sure, we know the seawalls are a year, two years off before we repair them. Our crews have been working continuously. Not sure we got any out there today, but they were working Monday and yesterday on erosion problems. We have those that we've tracked through resident calls or that we discovered ourselves. We're doing sandbags, fist queen tarps, relocating gutter pipes. That seems to be the vast majority of what needed to be done immediately. We have out for bid right now, two different methods for erosion control. And we were directed to do this through the Canal Advisory Committee. They said they didn't mind expending their funds for that. One of them is called biomatrix fiber. It's like a hydro mulch where they used to spray grass seed and the green stuff fertilizer on the ground. Well, they've got a mixture of that, that they mix with wood chips and glue and it lasts for a year on the ground. Holds everything together. They use it for hazardous waste containment. So we're looking at that. And we also have something, it's called a sock. Someone in our office described it more like a dirt taco. They take a special membrane and they lay it and stake it on the ground up on the upland side of the seawall failure. They drape it down into the water, they fill, they pull that back up and they fill that area with, not completely full of dirt, but enough dirt that that remains an anchor there. And then they fold the top back over it, so it's kind of like a taco wrapping around the dirt. And they stake that back into the ground. Now that, they use it all over the country for natural shorelines. And it's a permanent solution for natural shorelines. They even tried to sell it to us as a better alternative than seawalls, but, but it's about $50, $55 a foot to do that. And in reference, a seawall panel costs about $300 a foot. We looked at putting steel panels in, and that's the same price as seawalls. Then the added cost is you got to pay somebody, you're renting those panels or buying them, whatever, that's an additional cost. And then you got to pay somebody to take those out. So the cost for that, it's just as much as a seawall. So we're not really finding any place. We think the erosion control that we're doing, we're going to continue to monitor each of these cases. We'll go out after storms and look at them. We'll take phone calls. We're going to let folks know that they're being monitored and we, that, we think we've got a handle on the erosion for the time being.
So you're going to try both of those methods?
Yes, different places, different things. Some places, both things. The ones where we'll be using the sock is those whose seawalls have fallen completely away and they have that shoreline erosion. When the boats go by, they, you can see the dirt's moving every time a boat goes by. Those will be getting a sock. And then depending on what the ground upland from that is, we may be spraying it with the biomatrix fiber as well.
Yes.
Word of caution. Our city engineer is very optimistic that we will have contractors working by the middle of December. I know how our bidding process works. I know how the paperwork works. We're now entering the holiday season. If they're out there working in mid-December, great. It probably won't occur until January. I just know how it works.
Yes.
I would see no problem if the city was to draft a generic form letter outlining the city's, the district's responsibilities with respect to seawall replacement and repair, identifying our basis for prioritizing how those are going to be done, and providing some measure of assurance that at some point in time, the seawall for any property will be replaced or repaired without providing any particular timeframe and indicating ultimately it would be up to the city's discretion as to when that would be accomplished. But I don't think that there's any, as long as the property that we're talking about is within the district, we're not making any assurances with respect to any property outside of the district. So, I mean, that, that might be of some benefit to the realtors. More than that, I think the city would not really be in a position to do.
And don't we have, I mean, we have web, a webpage? We have, I mean, how are we keeping all these updates on?
Yes, we have a page dedicated just to the storm-related seawall failures.
So we could provide that as well as a way to get more information as it comes forward?
Put it in the weekly. We put it in the weekly.
Well, this, if we, if we put that in the letter too, if they're handing it off to a potential person that doesn't live here yet.
Okay.
You know, it would be more or less a resource for them to go to.
It's more helpful to a realtor or to a buyer to have something from the city, at least assuring them that at some point in time, if they're in the district, it will be replaced and repaired. I think that provides some measure of comfort to a prospective buyer than just listening to a realtor making those assurances. But it would have the appropriate, you know, caveats in it. And I think we'd also, I, I don't know that we need to go into anything more in terms of funding and just say that ultimately, it's the discretion. I mean, it could be, something may happen in the interim, which will put our plan off even further. But ultimately, they're our seawalls and ultimately, they'll be repaired because that's what people are paying into the district for.
Right. A comment, a question from Mark relative to the bidding process. I know that Marine Contracting Group takes a two-week hiatus at the holiday season because of the severity of the issue and our sense of urgency. Is there any way that we can assure that the contractors will work through the holiday season and start, once they, once they start, we will work and not take an immediate break?
As Howard explained earlier, they will be authorized to be, to begin work shortly after the council awards the bids, which we expect early December. Yeah, sometimes they drag their feet getting their insurance paperwork together, all of that sort of thing. So we do have stipulations in the contract that they have to make continual progress and that's defined as whatever portion of work that they're doing, that they get that a week's worth of done, a week's worth of work done every week rather than just dragging their feet and then at the end of the month, bringing three crews in and doing a month's worth of work. They have to make continual progress. So we have that. But at the very startup, we expect that there'll be some who do better and some who have to be pushed along a little bit to get them started.
I just know, I mean, they're going to have to staff up. They're going to have to get their equipment in place. We've been at this a long time. We know how these things go.
And this whole area, this whole region has been impacted. So, I mean, we're not the only game in town.
I understand. Had to ask.
Yeah, good question. Yes.
Two quick things. I'd like to maybe back up what Nancy said earlier about the boat wakes because that is a problem. We have had an enormous amount. I live on the Rim Canal and I got to tell you, they're not watching the wake when they're going by my house. And there, we've got several properties just on my street that lost their seawall. That's a really crucial piece of the puzzle because that's going to continue to cause erosion throughout the canal system. I think maybe we need to get more marine patrol out there on a regular basis. And if that means bringing in Bill Gunther's team to patrol during the day, if we can get them out there to help, just the fact that the boat is on the water and visible slows the people down in the wake. And, and especially on the weekends, we're now starting to see seasonal people arrive. I'm going to tell you, I hate to sound this way, but the people that don't live here year-round are the worst offenders of the wake system, the wakes in the canal system. I sit there on any given Saturday and when they're going out in the morning and when they're coming back in the afternoon, especially in the afternoon if they're trying to beat a weather storm, they are going full speed ahead right past my house. And that's something that we really have to be cognizant of. And I think we need to enforce the marine patrol unit being very active on the canals right now. That will help that part of it. I'm also concerned that MCG is out there giving individual bids to people right now when they know that the city owns the seawalls. It does bother me a lot. And I think that depending upon how we vote on this today, I think that they should be contacted and told that they shouldn't be doing that. Since the seawalls are owned by the city, I think that they need to understand that they can't be bidding individual contracts for people. That bothers me a lot.
If I could speak on that, we've been in very close contact with MCG. They, they called us when they first got their first phone call. They've called us all along and our response to them was, we've heard a lot of these requests, please put one in writing so that we can move forward and get this to council and actually know that people are serious about making this expense and moving forward. So I don't think they're out there doing that, trying to sell seawalls to people. They're, they're trying to just keep their phone from ringing off the hook and appease customers who are begging them to do this work. I haven't spoken to any other contractors on it, but MCG's been very forthright and...
Gary?
Just a question to Mark. For somebody to start repairing their seawall, they're going to have to come to the city for a permit.
Yes.
And at this point in time, that's not a permit that's, it's not permissible because the seawall's owned and controlled by the city.
Come to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Sharon Nippenberg, controller. I appreciate what you said, Mr. Wine. It is the city's seawall and everybody needs to remember that. We are in a very unique situation. Our community is very unique. We, I've been here 20 years and I've dealt with FEMA three times on our seawalls. And we have been, each new person that walks in is absolutely shocked when we say the city owns the seawalls. I mean, it's just unique in the United States. And what foresight from, from the city council, from those people who were agreeable to joining a district to support that ownership, that that occurred. Because any community that was faced with the kind of damage that we're facing today, it's severe. It's severe. And the last storm was Hurricane Wilma, you know, and we had $5 million. Prior to that, there was the no-name storm in 2003. Dave, I think about...
Three.
Three, and then her, and then tropical storm Gabriel. So, so we have a history. We're, we are working with FEMA. FEMA's watching us very closely.
Yes.
I got a phone call yesterday. They wanted to know what was going on. They wanted to know, is it true or is it a rumor that you are going to be accepting contributions and that you are going to be changing the method of your seawalls? And I said, I will check with Public Works. And of course, I spoke with Mark. So they're reading our newspapers and they're listening to people who are calling them. What we all need to remember is that the whole Stafford Act, which is a congressional act that is funding this program, is all built on public assistance. It's for public welfare, you know, protection of health and safety. It is not protection of private property. And so that's the mantra we're just so used to every time they come. It's restoring you to the pre-storm conditions, restoring you to pre-storm conditions. You cannot change what you're doing. We've dealt with that when we lost our public facility, you know, for Public Works and Fleet. And we went to a different location. We lost all funding. We knew that. We, we did that intentionally because we knew, you know, we didn't want to build back in a floodplain and we didn't want that facility in that location. So we did that. But when they say, oh, we hear you might be using steel panels, where'd they hear that from? No, we have an engineered design that says we use concrete, you know, concrete panels with this much rebar. So they're going to be looking at all of that. They will be bringing in all their own field inspectors to examine...
Everything.
Everything. And, and yes, that may be random audit or they may decide to go more in depth. And that's their purview and that is them protecting federal money. We want them to do that because the city of Pontegora has no intention of misrepresenting what we're doing at all. So I appreciate every comment that I've heard here today. It sounds like you are all well apprised of what FEMA can and would like to do for us. And we need to make sure our citizens understand that too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question?
Yes.
Do you know if FEMA, or has the discussion with FEMA been had with respect to if a property owner wishes to pay for the cost of installation and removal of the steel panels on a temporary basis until the city has replaced the seawall? Whether FEMA has any objection to that because we won't be seeking those costs from FEMA?
The first conversation that Dave and I had with them on telephone was not that one, but it was about the whole erosion issue. And this is just how cautious, and as you said, linear FEMA is, public, public, public. So when we just even talked about erosion, they said, protection of private property? And then there was just silence.
So...
Private property is going to always be a no. And I'm going to finish the rest of your question. So then when we met with them in person, we had Public Works staff, which is just so excellent to have, you know, all of our experts there and we had our maps. FEMA was truly impressed that this is not something that we do once in a while. We protect our seawalls every day of the year, every year. And, and they got that picture and that was good for them to understand. We're very systematic about what we do and we know exactly why we do it the way we do it. However, then, I did raise the question, didn't want to, but we knew that it was a pressing issue that was going to come to council. And I said, we have some citizens who would be interested in foregoing all of the waiting in line and paying it themselves. And, and you understand, I'm dealing with first-level FEMA representatives now. So FEMA, this, I had a regional person and a local person. And so the local person was quiet, the regional person stepped in. And his comment, just off the cuff, he said, I do not understand why... why the city would want to allow a private party to work on public facilities. That was the first comment.
Answers my question.
And so, my question is not with respect to the seawall itself. But, and it sounds to me like maybe the question wasn't posed or answered by FEMA, but as long, if we're not replacing the seawall with the steel panel, but simply upland of the seawall, if a property owner wanted to put in their own steel panel temporarily to maintain status quo until their seawall was replaced and agreed to pay for the cost of the installation and pay for the cost of the removal of that steel panel, it would sound to me that FEMA may not have any, FEMA may not have an objection because it's not involving the seawall itself.
And that question has not been posed to them. They're very clear about public property versus private property. They understand that whatever's done, I guess what you want to call upland closer to their property, not city property. I believe they will just have no comment. The question has not been asked.
Thank you.
So, that could be an alternative.
Possibly.
I just don't want to jeopardize anything with FEMA at all. I'm.
I mean, if it is, if they don't have a, how do we know that they're not going to come and claw back or de-obligate or, you know? I mean, I know that what we could say is that, well, this was a private property situation that occurred and that didn't interfere or have anything to do with our public reinstallation of the seawall. That could be our case, but.
I mean, it may be possible to get a written clarification with respect to the installation of the sheep, you know, for homeowner that won't be seeking a reimbursement from the city or FEMA, not involving the seawall itself, but an upland structure. If we can get that in writing, that might help if anybody was willing to pay that kind of a cost and willing to remove and et cetera, et cetera. That, you know, with that assurance from FEMA, that may be an option that the city could at least advise property owners that it might be available to them.
Gary.
I'll let Joe Hager go first.
That's actually why I was saying, if we talk about it, two different things, erosion control and seawall, it's just, they're separate things so that we don't even get into seawall world. The seawall world is FEMA world. We just don't interfere with that at all. So, this is just one way, even how we discuss it, we don't even discuss it as a seawall mitigation. It's just, it's its own thing.
Do we want staff to pose the question?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Get clarification on that point. But as far as the other, anything to do with the structures itself, stay city, city work.
So, we, is this consensus now that homeowner will not be allowed to go ahead and.
Repair the seawall.
Do their own seawall.
Repair their own seawall, right, okay.
Okay.
I would make one more comment. This is on the, not about the seawall itself specifically, but it is about our staff. I think we've directed the staff. Is my slide available, Howard? Is that slide I asked for available?
Yes.
Could you put the slide up, Michaela, for me or?
It's available.
Okay.
That's Mitchell.
Mitchell. I wasn't, I wasn't watching as I was speaking. I wanted to take an opportunity today, and I want to do it now instead of waiting to the end. The, to compliment our staff, and in this case, also Howard Dehauler. If you take a, this is Lakes Park in Fort Myers on Sunday. This is where they're at in their debris removal. Our whole staff, whether it's procurement all the way to Rick's guys and Howard Dehauler and so forth, we were so far ahead of the ball. And I think it just needs, and we had constituents that were complaining to us about, on day three, why we had, why they were still waiting. And I learned that I was the last block scheduled, but they did miss one block. So, I was only the second-to-last block to be cleared. But I just want to say, you don't have to go very far from Punta Gorda. You only have to go down Marlimbia on the way out to the Botanical Garden, which I suggest everybody do. That's another, you will see that the county is way behind. The, our neighboring neighbors are way behind. And I just wanted to take another opportunity to thank staff and their competency and their tenacity. And I think this is just another case where we need to, as a council, follow, we should ask them to pose these questions that we just asked them, but to follow their wisdom and their lead and their work because they have demonstrated over and over again through the years and recently competence. So, I commend you all, and thank you very much. So, I got to say my piece.
Yeah, nice.
Absolutely agree.
Okay, so you have your direction?
We do.
Yep, and we'll get the, by the fifteenth, you think we'll have the answer to the other?
To the.
The private, what he said.
By the fifteenth of November?
Yeah, do you think it could happen that fast?
We will, we will pose the question.
We'll pose the question.
We will pose the question. I can't guarantee an answer by the fifteenth of November.
When we get the answer, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay. Try your best, try your hardest.
We will pose the question.
Okay, next we have reconsideration of Medical Marijuana Treatment Center dispensing facilities within the city limits of Punta Gorda.
I asked for this to be put back on the agenda because I just feel that we are violating the state statute as it was put into place. We are violating the intent of the voters. And with all the surrounding communities that are going forward with ordinances to allow the dispensaries, I think that we should reconsider this. And I wanted it back on the agenda so we could discuss it again. The fact that Charlotte County has now approved them, Lee County has approved them, Collier County is shortly to do so, and Northport have approved them. You know, we actually stand the chance of having one on forty-one in a vacant storefront at this point in unincorporated Charlotte County, but in the area of Punta Gorda mailing address. So, our intent might have unintended consequences by not doing something and being proactive about this. So, I would like us to talk about it again. I'd like to see us be a leader and not a follower on this issue.
One thing, I spoke to Commissioner about why this came up last week. It came up because of the second reading and didn't come up because it was a reconsideration. It came up simply that mums had passed and they hadn't done the second reading. I had a few slides I wanted to show in regard to this because I went to the medical.